Good evening and welcome to the June 6th meeting of the Dover Sherburne Regional School Committee. I am Beth McCoy, the superintendent, and I call this meeting to order at 6:34. We are live streaming tonight on DSC TV. We have made a Zoom link available for community comment only. And at this point, we are going to launch right into welcoming our new member, Colleen Burt. Welcome to the Regional School Committee.
Thank you very much.
Colleen has served on the Dover School Committee and is now moving up to the grade six through 12 contingency, so welcome to the next level of learning.
Thank you so much. My daughter asked me tonight, she said, will you know anybody there? I said, yes, thankfully, and I love working with them. So thank you guys for welcoming.
Welcome. So at this point, we do not have a chair or a vice chair. So I would like to call for a nomination for Chair of the Regional School Committee for the coming year. Angie?
I would like to nominate Judy Miller as Chair for this coming year.
Is there any other nomination or a second for that nomination?
I would second that.
Mark, any discussion? Okay, all in favor of nominating Judy as Chair? Please raise your hand. Okay, unanimous. Congratulations, Judy. The meeting is yours.
Thank you all for your confidence. And thank you to my predecessor Maggie, who has been wildly helpful and welcome, Colleen. Okay, so the first, oh, we have to now nominate a vice chair. So is there a motion for someone to nominate a vice chair? Maggie?
I would like to nominate Mark Healy as the Vice Chair.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, the vote is unanimous. And now we need to nominate a secretary. Would anyone like to make a motion to nominate a secretary? I would. I would like to nominate Angie Johnson to be Secretary.
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor? It's unanimous. And now we can move forward. So the first question is, is there anyone here for community comments? Okay, then I will read this. And is there anyone on the Zoom?
None at this time.
Okay, so. "Community comments are an opportunity for members of the community to be heard. We respectfully request that you make your comments brief, no more than three minutes, and that you move the discussion forward by adding new information. Please try to avoid repeating points that have been already made. We have also opened a Zoom link for members of the community to make comments even if it is not possible or preferable for them to join us in person. If you'd like to speak, please raise your hand and wait to be called on. When you speak, please begin by stating your name and whether you live in Dover, Sherburne, Boston, or a DS faculty member. Community comments are an opportunity for the school committee to listen to members of the community. It is not a forum for answering questions or engaging in a debate. Once the public comments section of the meeting has been concluded, we will move on to other business, and unsolicited comments from the community will no longer be permitted. This is standard operating procedure across our three school districts." So can I call for community comments?
May I offer a community comment?
That would be wonderful. Thank you. Would you, do you want to come up so we can sort of? Thank you.
Sure. So I'm Tara Levine. I live at 32 Trafer Road. I have two boys who have been and are in the DS system. One graduated two years, and one who is finishing his junior year, a week and a half. And as the year ends, I really just wanted to come to say thank you because, you know, I know this is a tough role, whether you're a school committee member, an administrator, a teacher, you know, a leader in some way, shape, or form. And I just wanted to represent my point of view, which I know is a reflection of the majority of the DS parents out there in the community, to say, we appreciate the work that you do, and we appreciate the balance that you always achieve between creating an inclusive, empathetic, welcoming environment for students and also ensuring that there is a challenge for academic achievement. And like most parents, I acknowledge that those two things are not mutually exclusive. And the work that each of you do to be able to push that forward is something that we all appreciate. We all know it involves long hours, weekends, you know, challenges along the way, but we all benefit from it. And certainly, you know, as I think about our two boys, we were lucky enough to live abroad for six years and go to international school. And by nature of it being an international school, they were exposed to a level of diversity, which we don't necessarily have here. But I will say that you are preparing these students to graduate into a world that is more diverse and creating empathetic, you know, listeners who can hear and who can be allies and at the same time be critical thinkers. And so again, as the year ends, I want to say thank you. I want to reinforce that we are all 100% behind your work and, you know, we're supportive of you and certainly appreciate the work that you're doing and wish you a wonderful summer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so seeing no one else here, we will conclude our community comments section and move on to our agenda, which begins with the audited financials for 2022. So I'm going to turn the program over to Dawn.
Thank you. So we promised we'd get them in before the end of the year, and we've been able to achieve that. We're fortunate enough to have Bob Brown, our principal from R.E. Brown, who's our auditors, here with us tonight to present the financial statements. And in addition, this year, I think I've been telling the committee, we've also underwent a federal single audit report mainly due to the universal free lunch in fiscal year 22 that brought in almost a half a million dollars with our revenues and put us over the threshold. So we've presented both draft reports for your review this weekend. Hopefully, it gave you a nice big packet. And Bob is going to hit some of the highlights and be here to answer any questions you may have. So Bob, the floor is yours.
Good evening. Our firm performed the fiscal '22 audit, the financial statements. Our audit opinion was a clean opinion. Dawn, our staff, did a great job. We had no audit entries to propose. The only adjustments we make are we have to add some things for national government auditing standards as opposed to Massachusetts regulatory system. So we just threw a conversion on some items. One of those is the OPEB liability. And with regard to OPEB, we were glad to see you made a hefty contribution, a good contribution. It's meaningful. I have a lot of clients that they've established a trust, but they're not putting in enough, and it's almost like they're not, don't have a trust. It has to be addressed in a meaningful enough way to get your discount rate in your favor so that it can improve your financials on the OPEB overall liability. It's a large package, the financial statement. What I usually like to mention is page 17, the budget statement, because, you know, governments, you know, live by their budget. So I consider that statement the most important in this financial statement package. National standards don't agree with me. They're going to put this in the very back of the report in a couple of years, so they don't think it should be a financial statement. But that aside, you know, revenue exceeded budget by $177,000. There were return budgets of $263,000. So it was an overall plus of $442,000 almost, which contributed to the E&amp;D for the next The OPEB contribution was $150,000. The fund is now up to $880,000. Long-term debt decreased by $815,000. And the bond payable you have right now is going to be paid off in fiscal '25. So at that point, you'll be debt-free. I don't know what projects you have in mind, but it might change that. I usually also mention the state contributed to the mass teachers' retirement system on behalf of the district, $3.4 million. It went direct to the teacher retirement system, but it has to be reflected in your financial statements as aid from the state and then employee benefit expense. So we incorporated that in there as well. As Dawn mentioned, you had a federal grant audit. It's a separate report this year. We refer to it as a single audit, a common term. This is required when you have more than $750,000 in federal expenditures. Generally, you do not. Fiscal '22, you did, mainly because of the free lunch program in fiscal '22. That changed for '23, so you may be back under that limit and may not have one next year, depending on the mix of your other grants. Yeah, the school lunch program was accounted for $497,000 of the expenditures. Special education was about $350,000. No management letter because we didn't notice anything. It would require to be brought up in a management letter. Sean, a senior staff member, he handles the single audit portion, and he's been kind of the supervisor on this audit for several years now as well, and communicates regularly with Dawn as well. So everything went well, and single audit had no findings. That is unusual for a government that isn't used to having a single audit. Usually, if it's the first time having a single audit, you're unfamiliar with all the requirements, and there's usually a finding. There was no findings. So that was very good as well. So other than those points I mentioned, it was uneventful, which is good.
And in two weeks, we're going to start the next audit.
Get busy again.
Well, thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions?
I was just going to ask, how often the audit is completed? Is it, this is?
Annually. Yeah, the region does it annually because we're required to. So once that we're presented tonight, we'll issue the final, and then actually, there's multiple places we have to submit the statements to.
Okay. I can just thank Dawn and the business office team for being so thoughtful and meticulous simultaneously to present the financials in a way that there were no findings, especially in a new single audit protocol. So thank you, Dawn, and thank you, Mr. Brown.
Yeah, Dawn, we take you for granted, but it's really, seriously.
You've got to remember, I'm a prior auditor. That helps them.
You really do. We never have worries. All right, so moving on to staff reports.
Couple days off.
Superintendent McCoy?
Okay, great. I will provide some brief updates tonight and a more thorough update next week when we have all three committees together for a joint meeting on June 13th. So for those who are not yet aware, the school committee negotiating team has come to an agreement with the Dover Sherburne Education Association in terms of the contract, the next three-year contract for our educators. So many thanks to Kate and Lynn Collins for serving as the representatives from the region on that committee. We will be presenting to you that agreement next Tuesday for a vote by all three committees. It's important to know that the union voted 85% in favor of ratifying that. So that is a great number of educators who are behind the agreement that had come to terms. So thank you. Dawn, another wing in her angel status, is working with me for the other four associations that we're working on contracts for. Educational Assistance, Administrative Assistance, Food Service and Custodians. We have settled with three out of the four. We're almost ready to settle with the fourth, and hopefully, we'll be presenting those four contracts for you as well next week to vote on. So all good news in the negotiation front. Next update, and I don't want to take the funder away from our two fabulous principals, but just to let you know that in both the middle and high school, our Synergy 911 team did come in and do a presentation for parents and then training with our six through 12 students. I know the feedback I heard from staff and students on the ground was all positive and appreciative of empowering the students to be able to make decisions in the moment. I had an opportunity to work with a seventh-grade class on barricading a room and a 10th-grade class, so I got to be in the moment with the kids and kind of experience the feelings and the emotions they were having. And I'm very proud of our kids as always, but it did seem that it was a tool they appreciated having in their toolbox. Next update, I just want to thank some of our staff who are leading us, one of whom is sitting at this table, Mr. David Lawrence. As you know, has decided to step down from his position as middle school principal. As I said to the staff when he announced it, he is one of the warmest, kindest, most thoughtful educators and people I've ever met. I so appreciate everything you've done for the middle school this year in terms of loving the kids, making student-centered decisions, and making progress on all of the goals that started before you. So thank you. We're going to miss you. And I'd also like to recognize Mimi Ferrick, who is our secondary special education coordinator, who was here in interim position. And as you know, we're bringing on two coordinators next year, one for the middle school and one for the high school. So thank you to Mimi, who I know has been much appreciated in both schools and has created great relationships with our staff in just one year. And I know some of our administrators are hoping that we can keep her on in some way, shape, or form, and they've got her on a short leash. So given that, we have some new appointments. Ann Dever Keegan, currently the assistant principal at the high school, is moving into the interim principal position at the middle school. Later on, John will give you an update about filling Ann's shoes at the high school. And we also have some retirements at the region. I would just want to recognize some of our staff who have given years of service and love to our students and community. Maria Liscara, Spanish teacher, is retiring. Lori Alighieri, technology teacher. Ellen Hyman, special educator. Deirdre Clancy Kelly, science educator. And Sue Connolly, who is an administrative assistant to the athletic office. So so grateful for their service and want to wish them all the best in their next chapter. And always bittersweet, that gives us an opportunity to bring on some new staff and educators. Thanks to Mr. Smith and Mr. Lawrence and their teams for doing incredible searches, interviews for all of these positions. I have the pleasure of meeting their final candidates and recommendations at the end of the process. And every time somebody comes into my office, we have a half an hour conversation about teaching and learning, and then off they go. I just am so excited for the future of DS and the opportunity that our kids are going to have. They're hiring student-centered, engaging, exciting, innovative teachers, and just continues to add to the plethora of amazing people we already have in place here. So thank you both for that. HR Director, quick update. Many thanks to Judy for sitting in on the interviews for two finalists for our HR position. Dr. Barb Brown sat in as a principal representative. Dawn was in on the interview as well. And we worked with Carl Valente, who is the interim town administrator from Dover, who sat in on the interview. So we had two finalists. We are checking references as we speak, and we hopefully have news to share in the next little while about somebody that will be bringing on this summer to help update us anywhere where possible, develop some protocols and procedures, and make sure that our employees have the best experience possible that they deserve as Dover Sherburne schools. Exciting news there. End of year activities continue. Again, thank you to our principals and their team for providing opportunities for all our kids to celebrate their accomplishments this year, celebrate each other, continue to build teams. Denny is available. For the record, Mr. Conklin was at Pine Hill Field Day today, engaged in some activities. So please let him know when he might be able to jump in a sack again for our sack race. He's quite talented. But thank you for always inviting us and including us. I know we had graduation, we have an eighth-grade celebration coming up. The DC trip is next week. Thanks to the school committee for approving it the first time in three years.
Tomorrow morning.
Tomorrow! Oh, I thought it was this week already. It's tomorrow. Anybody want to volunteer to go tomorrow?
Sure. I love a good field trip if you have any illnesses.
So I'm sure there'll be more information about the activities that are going on, but thank you both because it's a lot of work and a lot of energy at a very busy time. And lastly, I would just like to recognize our 149 seniors who crossed the finish line last Thursday. That was very exciting. And thank you to all of our pre-K through 12 educators who helped get our students to that finish line, and especially our high school leaders and educators who provided that last push or level of support to make sure all of our students finished. And just watching the students cross the stage, there were so many stories of success and grit and resilience and joy, and it was quite emotional. So thank you to everybody in the Dover Sherburne system, and especially to the high school team for helping get our students to that next level. And included in your report is our matriculation information about where our students are headed next in their journey. So all exciting news. And that's my report.
Does anyone have questions? No? Okay, so John Smith, we will move on to you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Miller. And Ms. Burt, I welcome you to the Regional School Committee. As Superintendent McCoy indicated, we had 149 seniors graduate. 100% of the class graduated. We were very fortunate with weather. It seems like after Thursday, the weather has been quite disruptive, and other than being a little bit warm, it was fantastic. I do want to point out that of that 149 seniors, we actually had five seniors who also received a seal of bili literacy, which this district has supported, which is an incredibly high standard. And we also had two juniors who received a seal of bili literacy with high distinction, which is quite impressive. I know you have the matriculation report, but I just wanted to kind of highlight a couple of things because I do think, just like in previous years, we have some amazing kids who have accomplished some amazing goals. And I know sometimes people will ask, how are we doing? How does it compare to other times, et cetera? We had, you know, students accepted to, you know, some of the most elite schools in the country, Dartmouth-Penn, Princeton-Cornell, Tufts, Colby, MIT, Trinity, Chicago, Georgetown. But we also saw some really interesting different trends, and we've seen it over the last couple of years. We've seen students attending some of the top liberal arts colleges all through the country in different parts, including Bucknell, Colgate, Connecticut College, Fordham, Holy Cross, Lafayette, Northwestern, Skidmore, Tulane, Claremont-McKenna in California, and Vanderbilt. We have students attending all three of the major big business schools, the Bees, the Babson, Bentley, and Bryant. We have a number of students attending engineering schools, and will be majoring that, Purdue, RPI, Carnegie Mellon, Virginia Tech, and WPI. We had a fantastic connection with the military this year. We actually have a student who received a commission to the Coast Guard Academy, and we have two students who are receiving full ROTC scholarships, one to Villanova and one to Princeton. In addition, we also are seeing some of our kids really branch out into some large public research universities, both public and private. Few are BU, Delaware, UVA, Auburn, Michigan, Indiana, Michigan State, Wisconsin, Colorado, Oregon, and UCal Irvine. We also are seeing groups of kids attend mid-sized public and privates, BC, UMass, George Washington, Northeastern Providence, UNH, URI, UVM, UConn, UMaine, UMiami, to just list a few. Internationally, we're seeing some really, really neat trends, too. We've got students next year attending college in the UK, Canada, Spain, and Australia. And then we also just have another plethora of numerous small colleges and universities that are scattered about the country. And what I think is most impressive is not only the caliber of these schools, but the fact that our kids are thinking big, and they're thinking beyond sometimes New England, and they're thinking different opportunities and maybe certain programs. And we have amazing schools here in New England, no doubt about it, and that's why a lot of people move to this area for work, for sending their kids to those schools. But we also have lots of fantastic choices within this great country and beyond, and we're starting to really see our kids venture into those opportunities, too. So I actually think it's really exciting. I think this senior class was absolutely amazing and did a great job of finding their fit, finding their fit, what was going to be right for them. Of that 149, we had the highest total of students who will be participating in collegiate athletics. We have 16 students going on to participate in sports, eight males, eight females. And if you would bear with me for a minute, I just kind of wanted to give you a quick summary of kind of the year. We hired three new teachers, two in math and one in computer science. All three have been outstanding and have really made a huge impact on our student body and the culture of our school. We had a teacher appreciation assembly a few weeks ago, and when those new teachers were named, the noise in the auditorium was deafening, and it was just a great tribute that our kids have really connected with these new teachers. And to Ms. McCoy's point, their ability to connect with students and to be student-centered. So I was really proud and really happy about that. This year, we held Seminar Day. We had over 75 presenters, 25 of which were DS alum. And that was really kind of a cool, you know, sort of giving back to their school. Our kids thought it was amazing, and I remember talking to some kids that day to say, five, six, seven years, this could be you, you know, presenting to, you know, students. Because we actually had some students who, just a few years ago, did graduate from here and are now going on to do fantastic things. You know, we had a sense of normalcy this year. We were able to have our model U.N. We came back with Tufts, the inquiry project for sophomores. Our MMEA competition, which is a music competition, sent several students to the local competitions throughout the state, and we actually had one young man perform nationally. He made the national cut. Our mock trial team, under the leadership of Mr. Bork, finished third in the state, the highest we've ever finished, and we only lost out to what would have been the first place, first, second place by one point. Both of our physics teams finished first and second in the state in their competitions. The math team had the strongest finish in years, knocking off Medfield not once but twice. The largest robotics team that we've ever put together competed in five separate competitions. It was the largest robotics team that we have had at DS. We have a new course coming in 2024, and we know that that will just enhance and grow that program. Wendy Rush and Nikki Graziano, a little combination of middle school, high school, put together a science Olympiad team, which was fantastic, too. And that was new for us, and we competed in several state competitions there. Emily Sullivan, our athletic director, had several MIA student ambassadors, both juniors and seniors, collaborating with other students all across the Commonwealth on a whole series of issues, some of which were diversity, sportsmanship, leadership. Just great opportunities for our kids to mix and mingle with other like-minded students. She also took a number of our female athletes to represent DS in the Women in Sports Day, which is held annually in Boston. We hosted an exchange student for the first time from Africa. He was from Ghana, which was fantastic, and it was an awesome experience for him. Our student council raised over $2,500 for the Matt Brown Foundation. Matt Brown is an incredible young man who unfortunately was paralyzed during a hockey game. He's a Norwood resident, and he has gone on to do amazing things with his foundation to support those who are paraplegic, quadriplegic. And he was also our keynote speaker at our Seminar Day in the afternoon, and is a good friend of a couple of our faculty members. We, for the first time, held captains' leadership conferences each season for every one of our captains of each of the sports, run by Emily Sullivan, and she brought in speakers for different topics, including things like implicit bias, leadership, you know, making tough decisions, working with challenging peer student athletes. We had 35 seniors participate in Senior Project this year. We took a grade nine field trip to see the performance of Romeo and Juliet, the entire grade nine. They were psyched beyond belief because under COVID, we just, there were so few of those. And kudos to Gretchen Donahue for really stepping up and taking care of that. We also had field trips to the Mowgli Courthouse with our mock trial team, JFK Library for historical research, the MFA with some of our art and music departments. Our science teachers took field trips to local watersheds. We attended medco conferences for both educators and students, and Tom Bork took a group of students to DC for the close-up trip. And some of our programming, our GRIT program, in its second year, is doing fantastic, supporting student health and well-being. I truly believe it's making a difference in keeping kids in school, keeping kids safe. It gives them a welcome place to come, to receive support. And we actually had two students who graduated this year and going on to college who are in that GRIT program, and I truly believe without that GRIT program, I'm not sure that they would be going off to college. We developed the Flex Block this year that enabled our enrollment in chorus and regional band to be the highest it has ever been. And Ms. Miller and I had the pleasure of seeing two of our archipelag groups, but also our regional chorus group, and they were a small army, which was fantastic. which was fantastic. Several golden key art awards through the art department, through Ms. Wright, Mr. Buck, and Ms. Blaze. Once again, incredible drama programs in person with Ms. Bergeron in the fall and Mr. Walker in the spring. Music performances that were in person with Ms. Barry, with Mr. Herman, Mr. Dupre. We had a second year in a row of the TEDx Youth Program. And for those of you who know, TEDx is also a youth component where students apply and go through the entire process of developing it. They have to run it. This isn't something the adults can do for them. And this was their second year of doing that. And we're hoping for a third because one of the founding members is only a junior. We established five new clubs and over a dozen community service projects in local towns and beyond. We established a peer mediation program through Central Mass Peer Mediation. We trained 12 students in peer conflict management. And those students will be working with both high school and middle school students to resolve conflict throughout their day. Our Sustainability Club, which I know that Dawn does a lot of work for, is continuing to look at ways to eliminate unnecessary plastics in school. And one of the big things next year is to eliminate the bottles. And we've got amazing students who lead that charge. We saw the reemergence of SpanDS, which is a parent, educators, parents, local law enforcement, community leaders, religious leaders. And they are examining ways to help keep our kids healthy and safe. We've had a couple of different campaigns. I feel like we've got really strong momentum, and that's been really successful. We had some really important assemblies regarding Black History Month, diversity, school safety, and teacher appreciation. We saw unprecedented success across virtually every single athletic program. Almost every single program had tremendous success this year. We had numerous league championships, league MVPs, as well as Coach of the Year awards. One of the things most importantly is, we had no restrictions on students to be able to gather, be together, go to events together, and truly enjoy their high school experience. Some things we look forward to next year, we will be seeing increased participation in our AP Computer Science programming. This year, we have two sections. Next year, we will have three. In the following year, we actually will develop a second computer science AP course. We will have additional sections of AP History and Government as well. Those will be growing. And we'll have a development of a DECA club to support students interested in business. For those who aren't familiar, DECA is a business club model that a lot of schools, larger schools have, and they're fantastic. We are bringing on a teacher who's going to be a computer science teacher, but also has a business background. So, our kids, who have been chomping at the bit for business opportunities, are going to get that. We are proposing some new courses in computer science for the 24-25 school year. Next year, we'll be working on them, but also some business electives. We'll have new faculty in social studies, technology, engineering, and world language. We're also looking at increased access to first aid, CPR, and AED training, some of which is going to take place through our phys ed wellness department, our school nurses, our athletic trainer. And then what we're hoping to do is bring it forward to the Regional School Committee at some point to make a graduation requirement, once we work out all the accountability of how we're going to get 675 kids the training. We also are looking at an interdisciplinary course for juniors and seniors that would involve two or more academic disciplines. We have already visited two schools. It looks as though English will certainly be one of them. It's possible that social studies will, but we're also talking to our computer science and our art folks and technology and engineering because there's a lot of interest. We checked out the Evolutions Program at Wellesley High. And we also have checked out the Rivers and Revolutions at Concord Carlisle. And there's some excitement for that. And then we're also, in the near future, hoping and looking forward to an opportunity to have ADA-compliant bleacher system that will enable all of our students to have access, and then also expand our capacity for our students to perform. With all that, we've also been really busy with some hiring. And as Ms. McCoy indicated, my partner, Anne Keegan, is moving on to the middle school. And we have developed a, we had a process of a team of five or six that interviewed three internal candidates, all excellent candidates. And in the end, I am putting for Mr. Timothy O'Mara, who is a guidance counselor at the high school, as the interim assistant principal for the 2023-2024 school year, subject to contract negotiations with the central office. I just want to say that I truly believe we remain a strong academic institution that offers a lot of different activities and opportunities for kids. That being said, we're always looking at continuous improvement, and that's where we'll continue to make those improvements so that we get to the point where every single student feels connected and invested in their school. That is our goal, and we will continue to work towards that. But if I were to say this evening, you know, how are we doing as a school? I think we're doing quite well. There's always room for improvement. But I also have tremendous confidence in our faculty, in my team, and in our students, that we will continue to remain a strong academic institution. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
John, that was terrific, and thank you for everything you do. It sounds like such a vibrant community at the high school. So, so much going on. It's, it's really spectacular. On the, on the matriculation report?
Yep.
What I found so interesting was how many different schools the kids are going to. There are at most, I think, four or five at one school.
Right.
Which I think speaks to the, the guidance department and finding the right fit for each kid. And that's, that's terrific. Questions, comments?
Well, I would echo that. I mean, it was spectacular to hear about the range of opportunities at high school. And I was wondering about that, finding the right fit, because as vibrant as high school years are, I do feel a lot of kids wondering about what their next steps should be and what they should look like. And I think it would be fantastic to hear about these kids who are broadening that horizon a bit, going new places that we haven't seen before in recent years. Maybe we get like a one paragraph summary of like why that was a good fit for them.
Yeah.
And that way, guidance, when they meet with current juniors and seniors, they can kind of share a bit of this broader range of thinking.
Great idea.
I, I wonder on that topic, and maybe we already do this informally, but like, as kids who are coming up are looking at these schools, do we keep a list of like who we know from prior years who's already there that they maybe could connect and reach out with pretty easily? We probably do that already.
We do. I mean, we can always do more, but we have that program Naviance, right?
Yep.
And the Naviance has, it has some data through a scattergram that will kind of tell kids, you know, where, and we're small enough where in some cases, if it's a little bit of a unique school, like University of St. Andrews somebody is going to, that you can probably figure out who it is. You know, some of the other schools perhaps not. But Ellen and I are always looking at ways in which we can get that information to our students. And what I will say is, our current guidance counselors do keep tabs on that so that when they start meeting with those juniors and even doing some sophomore planning, that they rely upon what those kids had also given them for feedback and information. You know, another key component, I have to thank the community, both Dawn and Beth through the site-based budget, but also DSCF in the past. Our counselors have also been able to go visit these schools and really, and you know, sort of immerse themselves and meet with counselors and meet with students. And there's nothing better than being able to do that. And we are so fortunate at DS, our educators and counselors have been able to actually be on the ground at these schools in California, these schools in Scotland, these schools in the South. So that when that kid comes to them and says, listen, I'm interested in Elon, I'm interested in Emory, I'm interested in, you know, University of Nebraska, that we have a sense of what that school is about, some of their programs. I mean, we can clearly go onto their websites and all of that. But I, I don't think anything really is any better than being actually experienced what it is like and going there. So, you know, we'll hopefully continue to do that and to find ways. Because what is so neat is, our kids then come up with not just schools, but like potential majors or potential dual enrollment options, or these potential undergraduate and master degree combinations now that some kids are looking at, you know, RPI and Northeastern. So many of these schools have these five-year programs that some kids can really invest in. So, it's really critical that we continue, you know, to educate ourselves about that. And, you know, we're really fortunate, too, that our, our parents and caregivers are really invested in their kids' education, and they take these trips. And they'll, they'll take the time and get time off from work to go visit those schools, which, you know, is, is really important because that kid does need to see, can I envision myself here? You know, I, I often talk to kids when they're juniors, and you can, you can see that stress on them. And I'll say, how exciting is this? You're thinking about like, where are you going to be the next four years? And some will say, yes, but that's also what's scary, right? And so, you have to sort of balance that with them to say, yes, but it's also not something that, you know, if it didn't work, that that's the end of the world either. You know, that you're looking at just all these different options. And we know as adults who have probably lived in, you know, more than one place, it's very likely that you are going to move around. So, yes, always work to be done. But I really am proud of where our kids are sort of branching, you know, and looking at things. We, this year had two or three kids who are going to the University of Indiana in Bloomington because they have an outstanding business school. And, you know, if you are only in New England and you don't look outside, you don't know. So, it's really important that you know. You know, some of the schools in the Midwest, the Michigans, the Northwesterns, we, we know a little bit more about. But I love the fact that our kids are looking at other opportunities. We have a young man who's going to DePaul, which is just outside of Indianapolis. It's actually one of the best business schools in all of the Midwest. And once again, it's that exposure opportunity.
Thank you to you and all the faculty and all the folks who put things together so that these opportunities are available. I think one of the statistics, and you guys had it listed for 10 years, was percentage of kids who get to go to one of their top three choices for college. And it's, you know, the share, I think, was 88 or whatever. It's always, you know, most kids. And when you think about so many students who make college lists of 10 or 12 schools, I think we are in fact able to provide what kids want and need and provide that here. And so, it feels good.
Yeah. And truth be told, you look at those statistics, and, you know, there were some years where it was 88 or 90. When you look at those years, some of those are, there's a story behind that. Some of those are the COVID years. And what colleges and universities did is they over-enrolled because they really did not know who was coming and who was not coming. And so, you see it maybe three or four percentage points lower than that 2020. It's, it's twofold now. Colleges and universities are seeing an uptick in the number of applications. All the major universities are seeing application numbers go up by the thousands. They also are enrolling fewer students because their housing departments are saying, you can't keep doing this to us because sometimes they have to send kids. You know, some of these schools have great programs where your first semester is abroad because they've over-enrolled and they need to figure it out. So, it isn't really so much that, oh, you know, we were at 90, now we're at 85, and the year before that, we were 88. It really honestly depends upon where the kids are applying. We know all these schools. And the international competition within the last five to 10 years has also grown exponentially in China, in India, and also in just other, other places in the world, Eastern European, they have more access now to these universities. So, it doesn't mean that we're not going to be competitive. We'll continue to make sure that we are and look at ways. But those numbers are going to fluctuate a little bit. And then sometimes it's really going to depend upon the number of applications. And sometimes those universities, as we know, they have quotas. They, they want to make sure that they are keeping a diverse population across the board. So, it isn't mean that that kid couldn't succeed at that school. It's just they have so many slots. So, what we try to tell kids is, don't think of it as the school didn't want you, or that you couldn't be successful there. Because I would argue that any of our kids could be successful almost virtually at every school, because I think we have amazing kids. It's just they have their limits on their numbers. And what we tell kids is, then, okay, if that's the case, what else interests you? Where else do you have options? Because this country and beyond has so many great options. And then kids come back and will say, you know what? That turned out to be the best thing that ever could have happened. We know as adults, it's hard as an 18-year-old when you do have your, your heart set on that. And I empathize with those kids. But I tell them, have multiple options because you're going to have lots of great experiences, not just one set place.
I just want to say, it was great to get such a thorough, kind of looking back at the year. So, thank you for that. I mean, it's been a great year, sometimes a hard year for all of us.
Yeah.
And just really nice to get the whole picture.
Yeah.
Appreciate that.
Thanks.
I, I had a comment. I appreciate this huge variety that these kids have to choose from. I think that also helps with their college acceptance.
Yeah.
Because they have all these ways of distinguishing themselves that are not just a traditional, you know, just theater or sports.
Sure.
And there's, you know, which get a lot of attention for good reason here.
Yeah.
But there's so many other things for them to, ways for them to deepen their interests and explore. So, I appreciate that. I also appreciate the, having the exchange student from Ghana. I had an opportunity to tutor a student from Ghana when I was in college, actually. And it, it was amazing. It was, so I really appreciate that, that relationship was there. I wonder if that's a program that will be expanded?
Yeah. So, every year, we generally accept up to two, just because there's a lot. And, and it's been a wide range over the 10 years I've been here. We've had students from Asia. We've had students from Europe, students from South America. So, it, it depends. Sometimes we have students through AFS. That's one of the organizations that we've kind of had a longstanding history with. But we also do, in other situations, take in other students sometimes. We typically like for them to be sophomores or juniors. It just, you know, in terms of, we're not so much a diploma-bearing high school where they would finish. But in most cases, they, their home country doesn't allow them to anyways. They have to go back and you have to do some additional work. But we absolutely see the value in that. And, you know, whenever we can have students, it helps to enrich the lives of our students. And we also feel like it gives them, these kids, a fantastic opportunity. And they weren't able to do it this year. But in past years, we've also hosted an AFS sort of open house. We do it right around the fall, and we have our big pep rally. And we invite all the AFS students from all over this entire region. And they come and they speak to our classes and our students. And we have kids from all over the place. And it's an amazing day. And our teachers oftentimes will just say, I'm going to put a halt on things because today's going to be a different kind of day of learning. And these kids come in and talk about their experiences and what life is like in Finland and Russia and Columbia and et cetera. And it's fascinating. It just, it's an important part of the education. So, I couldn't agree more that maintaining those relationships are important.
I had a question about the courses that you're designing for next year, some of the new ones.
Yeah.
Because I know our financial literacy that you all do is so, it's necessary and it's so popular.
Yeah.
So, are those courses going to be taught by teachers who are already teaching now? Are they just branching out and doing?
A little bit of both. So, one of our new computer science teachers also has a business degree. And so, he'll be likely teaching one. One of our new computer science teachers will be coming in. And the following year, she'll be teaching, and she's going to start the DECA club. And then we'll probably establish either a marketing or a finance course for that. So, it'll be a little bit of a combination of some new people coming in, also with some people, like financial literacy is being taught by a math teacher who has been here. We're also looking at expanding and creating a bookend course to that financial literacy, which would be a mathematical economics. Right now, our econ course falls under the social studies department because it's more sort of based upon a macroeconomics. This would be more specific to math economics. So, we think twofold. One, it's going to give kids kind of a different twist to studying mathematics. And for those kids who really have an interest in the world of economics, and every year, we do have seniors who go on to study economics, to give them that opportunity. So, yeah, we're really excited by that. And having these people come in and be able to teach it provides that excitement.
I think it's fantastic that you are giving them practical courses that relate to everyday life and also are laying a groundwork for what they may be interested in studying in college.
Right.
So, thank you for that.
Right. Thank you.
Anybody else? Mr. Lawrence?
Well, thank you. It's been a while since I've been here, and I forgot how hard it is to follow John.
You should have gone first. It's our kids.
Also delighted to hear, I didn't know you guys had the AFS program. That was, I was big into that in high school. That was my thing. And I was an exchange student to Venezuela.
Oh, that's great.
Yes. And I competed in DECA.
Yeah. Yeah.
And got first place in, um, in gas station, uh, gas station, uh, management in New York State. They threw me in and said, do this. Great, it was a great weekend. So let's see. Uh, so, not quite as much, but, um, uh, some wonderful stuff been happening. So you mentioned about, uh, Wendy Rush and our, um, uh, science, um, uh, what's the word?
Olympiad?
Yeah, Olympiad, yes, exactly. So recently, they went to the, uh, the Massachusetts State Science and Engineering Fair with sixteen students in Worcester. And, uh, five of our students, uh, came in second place and are invited to apply to nationals. Um, so I'm excited about that. Harsha and Pranav Kilipara were part of a team that represented Massachusetts at the first Lego League Razorback Invitational Robotics Competition held in Arkansas, the University of Arkansas. And the team won the Core Values Finalist Award and got scored in the top ten percent. Um, and this was an international competition. Really proud of our eighth graders and the teachers who, uh, supported them to, uh, to, um, perform their annual service day with their, uh, community action groups, those CAGs, as they call them. They did, uh, they planned them all year, uh, worked collaboratively. They visited, uh, and served at several area farms that grow food for food pantries. They served at birthday wishes and cradles to crayons, um, at both Pine Hill and Chickering Schools, at the VA Hospital in West Roxbury, and on the shores of the Charles River. Um, and, uh, I think that this, uh, this whole year-long event really exemplified, um, the qualities that we look for in a portrait of a graduate. And so I'm really proud of the, of the kids and the adults who supported them, um, as well as all the parents who drove them to all of these places. Big thanks to all of them. We've had a lot of great arts performances, um, over the past month. We had some, a stellar production of one-act plays. We hosted the, um, METG Drama Festival here, uh, all thanks to Ms. Bergeron. Uh, we had band fest and of course, hot dogs and cool jazz. And I don't know if you walked in, if you came in that way and got to see, uh, the twenty-fourth Annual Arts Fest in the lobby. Um, and I don't, you probably came too late for the live music. Did you miss that? First of all, this, the, the speaker system that they had, it, they, they had it set up so that they were performing in the choral room with the live audience, but then, um, had a wire coming down to the first floor and so you had the live music in the, um, in the museum. And it was so good that it sent, I mean, I was in my office for part of it and it sounded like the, like the bands were right outside my office. It was just incredible. Some amazing performances, that was really fun. Um, a big thanks to, to all of our arts teachers who put that together. Let's see. Got a lot of exciting year activity, year-end activities lined up for our eighth grader to give them a joyful way to end their middle school adventures. Uh, tomorrow, all but three of our eighth graders are venturing off for three days in Washington DC for the first time in a, a long time. Um, and, uh, also going to Boston, for those who aren't going to Washington DC. Um, next, let's see, next Wednesday, Positive is sponsoring an eighth grade student faculty luncheon. Um, and then Thursday, we have a double header. Um, from two to three PM, we are having our eighth grade recognition ceremony where parents and caregivers are invited to join their eighth graders, um, for a, a moving up ceremony. And then that evening, the kids will be returning for, uh, their eighth grade dance, which is a Hawaiian luau this year. A huge thank you to Donna Benigan and Kathy Malloy for their tireless work to put this Washington DC trip together. I can't tell you, I mean, whatever you imagine, they put in, doubled it. I, I would, they would use the conference room, uh, next to my office and have all the paper scattered around the room and up on the board and, um, just an incredible amount of work. Also, a big thanks to Mary Mehmet, Tony Milborn, and Carmel Bergeron for putting the Boston trip together. Um, and all the staff, uh, who are chaperoning, uh, and sacrificing three days away from their family to the DC trip. And, um, to all the positive parents who are helping to make all of these events at the end of the year a reality. One last thing, I guess, at our last faculty meeting, Tracy and I shared our entry plan, uh, findings to the faculty, which highlighted, um, the many strengths that we've seen over the course of the year, um, including, uh, our incredibly dedicated and talented and hard-working faculty and staff, um, our amazing, curious, uh, creative and motivated students, um, and just terrific programming, um, and, uh, curricula and supports and traditions and institutions that have led to such terrific outcomes, um, for our kids. Um, and then we also highlighted some, what we thought were high-leverage areas for growth that we could look to for the next several years, uh, most of which are reflected in our, um, proposed school improvement plan, but, um, I'll just list a few of them here either in, in more details, including, uh, continued growth in our tier-one instruction to meet the needs of all of our learners, to further build out our intervention model that addresses, uh, our students' needs, to leverage teaming, advisory, and other elements of the middle school model, to grow our capacity to promote positive student behaviors and effectively respond to maladaptive behaviors, um, to utilize our physical space more effectively and creatively. And, um, last but not least, what I had hoped to accomplish this year, but we just couldn't get it through, uh, which is to revise our middle school schedule to, um, to really better meet the needs of our, of our kids and, um, and the organization. We, we got close, but it was just, um, there were too many balls in the air to, um, to really make the kinds of changes that we wanted to make and realized that it was, really made more sense to put off for a year. And so that's what we decided to do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Again, it really sounds like a very vibrant school community. And thank you for your service. Questions?
No, I wanted to just specifically highlight, you know, I loved the report and all the pictures, the CAGs, all the things that you highlighted. Um, I'm really happy to see both the opportunities growing for the kids in the middle school, especially to leave campus and do more active things. I think that particularly for that age group, being sort of homebound for a few years has been hard on, on, on them, you know, collectively, some of the kids who are now in high school. Um, and I really appreciate the work of the administrators and the staff who've, you know, kind of jumped back into action to do all those things. You know, when you think about the CAGs and all the things it requires and, and obviously the DC trip, um, best of luck to, um, Ms. Malloy and Ms. Benigan and all the folks departing. You said tomorrow?
They're going tomorrow, tomorrow morning, right in early.
Okay, six AM's good. That's not too early.
It's much later than that.
Right? I thought we were at three AM departure.
This one's starting five something.
Okay.
It's a staggered.
Yes. Um, but, um, you know, particularly in the areas of math and science, I think listening to not only the opportunities that kids have had at the middle school, um, you know, and it's always nice to focus on the achievement, which is really great and sparkling and super proud of those kids, but underneath, you know, maybe kids who won are all, all this excitement that's being generated around robotics, science, you know, and, and just, um, you know, all the kids, the pictures of the kids out in the Charles, learning to fly fish and also clean up the river. Um, I think they're really important experiences because those are the things that kids will remember. So really appreciate the whole community for digging, digging in to do those things. Um, and, and echoing Judy, a huge thank you for your service and for, you know, just reigniting that focus that we know and that I think, you know, speaking for all of us, wanting to focus on that whole child and always doing what is right for the child. And, and I know that's been a hallmark of the year. And so thank you.
Well said, Maggie.
I'll just add, David mentioned the CAGs, but I, uh, the business office, we process all their expenses and, um, David's regularly bringing cash over from the fundraisers that the CAGs are doing. And the recent request of probably at least over $2,000 worth of donations.
Wow.
That are being made to various organizations that the students have identified that they wanna help. I think is really impressive too. That sometimes you don't see that detail, but, um, I think the fundraisers provide a sense of social activity in the school and then they're doing good. I was actually, I was printing them all off. Today I'm like five hundred, five hundred, five hundred, five hundred.
Yeah, yeah. I think it was four, four, you know, four or $500 or five, $400. And then, and I just heard from Heather Bond, uh, who's one of the advisors, uh, of the Help Club and also Student Government, uh, that, uh, there's gonna be a whole nother batch from Help Club.
Yeah. A lot of good work happening here.
Very charitable-minded students.
That's great.
All right.
I have one other thing. I just, um, I wanna say, echo the thank yous, um, that we've shared tonight, but also I appreciate the, um, the relationship between the elementary schools and the middle school. Um, I was at the school advisory meeting yesterday at Chickering and they were talking about how that, how excited the fifth graders were for the visits from the eighth graders and just the real life, you know, help that they can give them because they know what they need to know. Um, there's talk at the elementary level of Portrait of a Graduate, you know, coming down, what is the portrait of a Chickering graduate? And I think our alumni are perfectly positioned to help with that, um, crafting that. So all along the way, the alumni really can help, you know, and the scaffolding I've always, um, found to be really powerful, um, with kids, especially they wanna learn from their peers more than they generally wanna learn from people like me. So, um, so I just really appreciate that. And like you said, getting off campus more, I know it's logistically, there was a van and things that had to be organized, but it seems like it was really valuable to them and I hope to the eighth graders as well.
That's great. Uh, yeah. And, uh, they're, uh, the fifth graders are coming tomorrow and the following day, um, and being led by, uh, a crop of sixth graders, um, who are gonna be leading them in a scavenger hunt around the school to get, just to get used to the facility and learn where the office is, where the nurse's office is, where the library is and all that kinda stuff. That should be really fun tomorrow.
That's terrific. Kate, did you wanna?
I, I just wanted to, I noticed that, um, among the many amazing things happening, um, that there's a new middle school acapella group, which I think is so cool and just, I think a ripple effect of the Flex Black and, and was it Music and?
Yeah.
Right? Um, and to see it getting to that.
And that one was so cool because it's led by students, by high school students. There isn't a faculty advisor to that.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I heard them perform today and they were fantastic.
That's so cool.
Yeah, they were absolutely fantastic.
All set?
Thank you.
So next is warrant report followed by, uh, the financial reports. So Dawn, do you just wanna take it over and?
Absolutely, thank you. And then I'm gonna have to follow these guys. Okay, so the warrants are?
Your sandwich, because they come back around.
Exactly. Uh, and so I wanna thank Mark for, actually, every warrant that you're looking at, uh, on your report has been signed. Um, so that's great. And, um, Colleen is pretty similar to Dover, but, um, everything's here if you ever wanna come over and just sort of look at, um, what the region's budget looks like when checks go out the door.
Thank you.
Uh, so the financial report. So, um, you have your financials as of May 31st and there is just a little bit of new information in bold. Uh, and, and as I said at the Sherburne School Committee meeting, uh, previous to the, that's good news, so we're not running into any issues that haven't already been, um, proclaimed to you. Um, I just wanted to sort of set the stage, I do, on the revenue side, I do anticipate probably a slightly higher reimbursement rate for, um, regional transportation. It sort of plays out that every year, I always hate to make an assumption of what it's gonna be, but don't be surprised, in September, if I would come back and the 80,000 has grown a little bit. Um, the reimbursement rate that's reflected right now is 73% and I definitely have heard that the actual reimbursement exceeds that. So, um, that's one point I wanna make. And it's still amazing to me how much interest we're making by moving our money over to the, um, the state trust. Uh, and so, uh, there's an estimate there, but my guess is in June too, that $100,000 will actually be even a little higher, um, which is all good news, um, to share on the revenue side. Um, on the operating side, there's really not much new information. I just wanted to highlight that, um, you know, we sort of manage our budget looking at salaries and then expenses. And on the salaries right now, we're within 0.81% of budget. You may see fluctuations, um, in line items, but just know that we do that by, we try to manage, so obviously we don't, um, staff members change their minds, they leave that post-budget, things happen. Um, you know, we're still working with, uh, being fully staffed with custodians. Uh, we still have our, um, head custodian here out on medical leave, so there's been a lot that we've been juggling, uh, but we try to keep to that sort of total salaries that we had budgeted. And we do the same thing on the operating expenditures. That is within, uh, 1.43% right now. So I think those are pretty good. They seem like there's a lot of, so I was, I'm trying to also, um, address sort of the, the fact that we have save a couple hundred thousand dollar surplus. When you put it in perspective of the percentage of budget, it's not as much as it seems. You cannot run a budget, uh, much better than sort of 1% because you have, there, there are tons of unknowns. Um, I wanted to highlight that now with, um, negotiations for the union a little bit further along, right, than we were, uh, when we last reported, we are seeing a, uh, negative variance in legal fees. Uh, just keep in mind, this only happens every three, three years. We don't spike our budget for that. We leave it where it is, knowing that we may run a little bit of a deficit, uh, but it's better just to have the even budgeting. Um, and we are looking at our final, um, insurance numbers for healthcare and so our projection for our contribution to the OPEB is actually gonna be 245,000 this year. That's probably close to where we're gonna be when we're at the 50%. Remember, we've, uh, maintained the cost savings from the 30 to 50% cost share that we did with our retirees in that number to fund. Um, and then we look at both of the insurance line items together when we decide what we're going to contribute to OPEB. Because what we don't do is move current year retirees into the retiree budget that potentially were in our active budget. So we look at that deficit. So if you look at those two numbers, it almost, um, nets to a zero, but we're negative on the retiree, but we're taking some of that retiree savings that was in the active and applying. So, um, after tonight's meeting, uh, we'll be, um, looking for our treasure to make that transfer. So, um, as, as Bob said earlier, it, it does show, um, to, it is to our benefit to show that we are funding and we're funding at our funding policy.
Yeah.
And that definitely will help our discount rate as we continue to have our OPEB, um, valuation. Uh, also in your packet is a roll forward of E and D. So you will see that we start with our certified E and D as of last June. Um, if you take your financial statements, you can see where I'm pulling the revenue surplus, the operating surplus. We're gonna talk about, um, proposed capital use tonight. Uh, you've already approved 160 of E and D for the fiscal year 24 operating budget. That leaves us with sort of a projected uncertified E and D of a million 129, which is at 4.04% based on the 5% allowance on your fiscal year 24 budget. So the million 398 is the max you can have. Right now, we're projecting to be under that by about 268,000. So that is a much more comfortable position to be in, um, rather than being in excess and having to worry about returning the fund. So I think we're in a good, um, setup here. I do think it's worth, it, it makes sense how we're sort of pulling back some of the smaller capital items and using that surplus in June to take care of it. Um, so I, hopefully the town's happy with that, but it seems like we're in a good, good cycle for that. So I think that's something everyone's always curious to see. I highlighted it is as of May 31st, um, because as I, I, I said, the revenue surplus may go up a little bit, but you've got a cushion there of 268 before we would actually be at the 5% max on E and D. Any questions on any of that? Okay, so, um, moving on, the rest of it is all just information that we've already shared. And there's no other new information on the financial report.
Um, so should we move on to the?
Capital.
Yeah.
Okay, so you have a, another set of documents. Um, so we have been talking all during the capital planning process about the two projects that we were going to hold for E and D. And that's the high school floor replacement, uh, which is the math wings, both the hallways and the classrooms, um, and the Lenquist student restroom renovation. And I thought I'd bring that, sort of be jazzed up a little bit. So this, it actually is the tile that is gonna go in, um, our two new bathrooms. So if you think about now, it's the really small tiles with lots of grout. So moving to the larger, it's just gonna make it a much cleaner look. And this actually, it almost looks like it was made for us, right?
It does.
Um, and so I'm so excited. And so I'm so excited to be able to rip up the old, get fresh painting on the walls, replace all the fixtures. One of the big issues we have in those bathrooms is if you go visit, the brown paper tiles are everywhere, floor, sink, the toilets. Getting rid of the paper towels is, I think, is going to make it a much more cleaner room. And I also feel like when a space looks nicer, it's treated nicer. So this is a huge, we're excited about this and so hopefully it all turns out. And this is sort of going to be our prototype, I think, for, at least for the sustainability initiatives that we're doing for future bathroom replacements. But we were very happy with the product that we picked out and we'll take a tour in the fall.
See, show and tell, we didn't get that from the principal.
I know. See, I said I had to bring something like.
Those bathrooms aren't really that big. It'll be a short tour, right?
It'll be a short tour, we only need about five pieces of those.
How's the lighting, how's the lighting in there?
Uh, the lighting's not bad.
It's okay?
Yes.
Is that being upgraded or it's the same? Is it LED yet?
It's not LED.
Okay.
No, not in there. But yeah, it's not, it's, it's traditional lighting.
Yeah.
But it's, it's not bad in there.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think that goes with the, the more you see, the better people are, you know, the brighter.
But just the cleaning up the walls, I mean, the walls are the cement, so right, but blocked, which is why we're trying to figure out how to lay all this. And, but I think again, that the, yeah, it's just, it's not pretty in there. So we're looking forward to, to that.
It's called the broken window theory. We see a broken window here.
Exactly, exactly. The other addition that we've actually been talking about, but I, I'm bringing forward tonight, sort of the whole package is, as John mentioned, the complete replacement of the bleacher and the press box. And so we're looking at that project of, of being at about a little over around half a million dollars. The structure itself and the installation of the press box and the bleachers is just under four hundred thousand. We also have to do the concrete foundation for the installation, a walkway from the parking lot to the stands and a few other little incidentals. So that, and with a, and with the design, ground, ground and foundation, I'm sorry, the design and construction fee also, then looking at that piece, we're estimating to be about a hundred and twenty-five thousand. So I'm looking for us to use a hundred and twenty-five thousand of E and D to fund that piece of it. The four hundred thousand dollars for the structure is going to be hopefully made up by, one, we're requesting a hundred thousand dollar transfer from community ed. We are soliciting a couple of community groups. And then remember, I also told you, we have funding from both the athletic revolving and the building rental. So we won't bring forward, so I need some seed money to get us going. So between the hundred thousand dollars of the community ed money coming into the capital fund, along with the one twenty-five, that allows us to start ordering and getting the project going. I hope, while we report back either through Beth or I think we'll be okay to wait till September to have you approve the gifts that hopefully we will have towards the project in addition to any additional funds that we'll use from funding that the region has access to. So that are two motions I'm looking for you to do tonight. The other thing I did was ask for sort of a sample picture because it's, you know, I always like to visualize. So what you have is a sample of the company that we are purchasing from, both the press box and the bleachers. Obviously ours is going to be a little, we're looking at a capacity of five hundred, but it gives you an idea of how the press box is embedded in the bleachers and the ramps. So we're using ramps versus a lift. And because of that, you're going to notice that it's going to be more elongated bleacher, so not as high, but it's going to start up high because you're going to have like a, a step up, a walkway, the bleachers and the press box in the middle with ramps on both sides and then one ramp actually on the side coming from the parking lot is what will take you up to the press box.
Should we ask questions about that program, that, what you have given us about that project now and then?
Yes.
Do the motions?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Yeah, because any, right, because you, I wouldn't want to have you approve any funding until all your questions of the project have been answered.
So I had one question, which is, I noticed in here that you said the lead time is something like eight months for the, for the kits to be delivered.
Yes.
Which means construction can't really start for eight months. A, why is that? And B, is there anything that we can think about doing to shorten that time?
Right, so as I've been saying, it's similar to our rooftop units and the lead time, anything that is, has steel involved is a long lead time right now due to the fact that they still haven't caught up in the supply market from COVID. No matter what vendor we went with, so we, we've gone one and we've got an estimate, the designer I'm working with, architect is saying it's the same everywhere. I don't think there's any way to expedite that, but I think it still puts us in the timeframe for, to be able, and that's why I wanted to get some funding tonight so we could sort of hopefully move forward with the ordering process. Because we're actually getting it off of a bid, collaborative, cooperative bid program is so that we can have it hopefully ready for the spring. Yeah, there's no way we would have it ready for the fall, even in our wildest dreams because we're going to place the order, we still have to do a lot of design work to get the other things going.
So we need that eight month lead time in some sense, some, some of it at least.
Some of it to get the rest of the work done because I can't start doing the installation until we have the concrete pad.
Yeah.
Right, so that, there's still surveys they have to do, the design work, design work in order to do the specs so that we can actually then go out to bid for the concrete work and the sidewalk.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
I don't have a question, but I want to say, I want to say thank you to you, to Beth, to, I think Emily Sullivan, to anybody in school, John, who's been involved in helping to kind of put this on the Acela train in terms of when we think about equity and, and all the work we've been doing, I think that anything that we can do every day to literally allow kids to come to the table and come to the field and participate is, is a hundred percent worth it. I appreciate the thoughtful ways that we are approaching funding for this and I think that it provides a much better resource for the whole community. You know, in terms of all the different organizations that access our fields, not just our schools, but the whole community and the rec sports and people who use our fields over the course of the year. Thank you.
Right, and it's all the rentals from those outside groups that actually gives us the ability to take the money from the building fund because it's going to benefit it all. Right, so I have high hopes that this is going to go off seamlessly.
The bleachers will be blue though, not red, right?
Of course.
Okay, just checking.
They're just going to be silver.
Silver's fine.
Yes.
No red.
Yeah, there is no red.
Okay.
Yeah, that's no red. That was just a good example of the closest, nice pictures they had of what we are moving with. Because I'm like, I'd really like to see it in person rather than just the drawings.
No, I think it helps and especially when we're talking with people about like, oh, it's, it's not as steep.
Yes.
People worry that means, well, I'm not going to be able to see. And I think actually this idea of being longer.
And it's really, so it's really almost like the thirty yard line to the thirty yard line. Because I said, so tell me, I need to see, how is this going to be?
Yeah.
So we've also talked about, so we have the speakers on top. So now there's better sound systems actually that will be on the scoreboard. That's all wireless, so that will take away those like from hanging there.
Yeah.
So, you know, we have, next thing they're going to do is to upgrade our lights and everything, but I'm like, whoa, whoa, let's just take care of what we need to do now.
As the mom of a soccer goalie who always needed to be on the very farthest end, I appreciate longer.
Longer. Yes. And it's really about the same capacity, it's just better and nicer. So, and I don't think people will be able to jump on them and bend them the way they are right now. So we have, we do have.
That fan zone is quite energetic.
We love the fan zone, but they got to stop with the jumping.
Because I think long-term, what we, except for football, we, you know, we've talked with Emily about having all fans on the same side so you can sit behind your team because we'll now have enough space that that's more desirable and easy to facilitate. And only in football would you probably use the visitor's stands over here. And that's mainly just because of the way the teams sit on either side versus on the left side, so.
I think that's nice too, like it's just a little more.
Yeah.
To breathe in.
Exactly, exactly. So a lot of work ahead, but you know, getting this initial funding, like I said, to get us the, the ability to start moving forward is what we're hoping for tonight. So there's two motions that are presented. One is to, for the two hundred and seventy-five thousand and that's coming from E and D and then one for the hundred thousand coming from community ed. Both, both those amounts will then go into the region's capital fund designated for these projects.
Other questions?
Yeah. I have an, I feel like I should know this, but I don't. Can you explain how we are linked to money from community ed?
Yeah, so we run all the community ed programs through the regions, which includes the after school care programs and the community enrichment programs.
Yeah.
And so if you recall, we use that sort of as our rainy day fund. We don't assess them a lot and so that's where we pulled the seed money for the OPEB, the half a million. So it is sort of a, it's come in, it's come in play multiple times. I'll always remember when I went to the MARS training for new business administrators and actually Dr. Perry Davis was one of the instructors and he, didn't say it was Dover Sherburne, but he said, for new business administrators, always check all the financials of your, your districts before you hire. He said, I didn't do that and I walked into a school district that had a negative E and D. But luckily they had a community ed fund that was able to bail, to bail them out.
I always assumed those were through the towns, but no.
No, so community ed is run through the region and services that, that mainly the after school care programs. And think about it, they used to have the CDC was run, the element, the preschool program.
Oh, yeah.
It also ran through community ed. So I think it's been, it's morphed in what it's done, but it also then provides all the community enrichment when you get the flyers. So all that money is at the region's disposal and we acquire surpluses and when we need it, we're able to draw upon that. I've started too, since I've been in this role to giving, actually charging the DETA and the SHEDA programs rent for use of the buildings to funnel some of that money into the building funds of Dover and Sherburne, which has greatly helped them to be able to do building improvements. So it's a, I don't think, I mean, I don't think it's unique that we do it. I think that's how most of them run, we're unique that it's a region and we sort of have fuller access to it.
Okay, thank you.
I think it's a great apropos use for the money to, to be able to use it for something that will benefit the entire community.
Exactly.
And you know, the, the bleachers and the, you know, even though it's a school thing, it is clearly a community resource.
Exactly, right.
You know, used by so many.
Right. And think about we, like, the community ed uses all of our facilities here, has their offices, we don't assess them anything. So part of this is just paying ourselves back for their use of our buildings, if you look at it that way too.
Anyone else? All right, so can I, should I move on? All right, so may I have a motion to transfer two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars of June 30, 2022 certified excess and deficiency funds to the region's capital fund to cover costs for approved FY24 capital projects, projects as presented.
Thank you, Sharon, so moved.
Do I have a second?
Second. Angie Johnson.
Okay. Any discussion?
Nope.
All in favor? Okay, the, the motion passes unanimously. Now, do I have a motion to transfer a hundred thousand dollars of funds from the community education fund to the region's capital fund to cover costs for the bleacher slash press box renovation as presented?
Colleen, very good.
You have to jump in.
We're on a line too, it's like starting a race.
Can I, is there a second?
Second in, Mark Healy.
Mark Healy. Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, the motion moved, passes unanimously. Thank you, Dawn.
Thank you, guys, very much.
So now are we back to the, we're now back to the John and David show, right?
So if I can just begin by giving a brief overview. So we, as we roll out more restorative practices and come in line with the state expectations around discipline and that we have to provide alternative methods for consecrating students and providing educational opportunities for students who perhaps make bad choices, there's a lot of work to be done in our handbooks. That said, in order to prepare our handbooks for the start of school at the end of August, we wanted to make sure we're up to legal compliance and catch anything that is absolutely necessary before we kind of do an overhaul to make them user-friendly and up to date. So John and David, I don't know if you would, just the, the minor changes.
Yeah, the high school, very, very minor. Changing our, some of our verbiage, gender neutral pronouns is really one of the big things. You know, removing the old bullying prevention intervention, making sure it's up to date. And then the other piece really is installing the restorative practices, verbiage. We've already actually started doing that in practice, but this would be something that we would have, as Ms. McCoy said, for the fall. So really, no major adjustments to our student handbook other than just the two that are specified there.
Can I ask you a question, is that? The bullying and prevent, prevention intervention plan that we?
Yes, so you updated the plan and the policy, we want to make sure the handbooks reflect that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. So is it the same as the one that the district is responsible for?
Yes. Yeah, so we just want to make sure the language and the links are up to date with the one that you approved in January.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah.
Okay, good.
For the middle school handbook, I think the, the, the changes in leadership over the last several years have kind of delayed what I think is really needed, which is a real overhaul. It's, we, the, our school advisory council went through the whole thing and commented it and found lots and lots of things to change. And I did the best I could to kind of get all of that changed, but there's so much more that needs to be done. It really needs a good summer's work for somebody to make that a project. And so it's, it's going to need to be done in stages, I think.
So that, are there general, there's general updates that we went done for September that are simpler than the overhaul? Or there's nothing essential?
No, I, I think we went through and made kind of most of the obvious changes. You know, if, if Tracy or Ann have any bandwidth over the summer to give it another look see, I'm sure they will find additional things that are worth changing or fixing or just using the right, the right lingo or making it up to date to all of the current forms that we use and links that we need and all of that kind of thing. But then, you know, there was a lot of discussion just about the organization of it and that the order doesn't make sense and all of that and that, that just takes more time than we had to do in the spring.
So I apologize, David's updates did not get into the packets. We will forward them to you tomorrow so you can do a first read of both the high school and the middle school.
So, you know, I, I saw the way that the high school did it and it was kind of by exception, like, you know, on page twenty-seven, we, we made this change and that change. That's impossible to do for the middle school one. We, what I basically did was I just left, I, I put it into suggestion mode, the, the whole handbook and any change that we made that was more than just like, oh, it's missing a period, like stuff that you wouldn't care, I just, I just did or formatting things. But, but for anything that had any kind of substance to it, I just left it in suggestion mode so you could see it, but there was really no way to, to just write it in a couple of pages, you had to see it in context.
So we'll capture that and just get it out to.
Yeah.
The committee to, to review before you approve it next week.
Thank you.
Yes. Any questions or feedback on the handbooks?
I, as a, as a member of the school advisory council, you know, while we don't have anything to look at tonight, I will attest to, it has had many folks look at it over many, many hours and, you know, to, to, to David's, it's like, you know, at every meeting, you know, eight folks would give really thoughtful suggestions and, and, you know, just sort of fell to David to do all of this. So I hope, you know, I look forward to seeing kind of the in-process in the handbook.
Questions? No? Okay, so that's good. School improvement plans.
So again, I'll just lay the framework in that through Denny and my entry process this year, we have presented to the school committee our findings, which create five buckets for what will soon become the district strategy. And this leadership team will be coming together this summer to kind of break those out into measurable, achievable action items. So there's still. So there's still some work to be done and thoughts to be hashed out this summer. That said, our principals have worked really hard to take this year's school improvement plans and say, what's the next logical step in all of these areas, keeping in mind those larger district goals? And so tonight, you'll hear their their first draft of kind of where they're at for their school-based goals.
I'm going to go first. All right, Ms. Miller, thank you. So we have four goals. I mean, there's many, many more things that we'll be doing, but the the four focus areas. We are continuing with our tiered intervention goal. This is really probably going to be a two, three-year goal of looking at tier one interventions. I feel as though as a high school, we've done a pretty good job with tier two and tier three, more intensive interventions that are needed. But the tier one are your typical classroom interventions, where teachers may be making modifications, adaptations. It's kind of based upon the the building-based D cap, which is like an accommodation plan. And that's an area where we need to continue doing some work. We did establish back in the fall a series of best practices, which was really a good exercise for us to do as a building. Taking all the departments together was actually a great practice for our department chairs, too, to collaborate and figure out across our disciplines, you know, what are we doing as it pertains to inquiry? What are we doing in terms of, you know, applying knowledge and being a critical thinker? So we want to continue with this tiered intervention goal. Some of it relates to our connections with special education, but some of it really is classroom instruction and classroom learning. And so we'll continue to adapt some time early in the school year to be looking at that. And we will tie that in with our best practices that we have established, which that was very useful. Our second goal is to really, I think, dig deeper into the Port River graduate. You know, we established, and we did a ton of work. When Beth was the assistant superintendent, did Herculean work in establishing and getting that off the ground. And then we had COVID, and then we sort of came out of it, and then we were discussing things. So I really want the faculty next year to dive deeper into those tenets, you know, engage citizens, critical thinkers, creative innovators, resilient learners, effective communicators, and productive collaborators. And I'm asking each of our departments during some of our faculty time and our department time to kind of draw some connections in like, almost like a crosswalk document that shows those in place. So in a grade nine English class, where are there examples of these following things that I just said? And how does that showcase itself so that we can truly link it? And so that kids can also see it for themselves, too? Because I think that when we talk about Port River graduate, especially at the high school level, our kids should be involved and engaged with this conversation as well, so that they understand, well, why are we learning this? And how are we going about doing this? And how will this apply to me as I continue on in my career? So that's the second improvement. Goal is to really kind of dive deeper into that. The third one is connected with the Port River graduate, but it's a little bit more specific, and it's us looking at innovative practices using the Port River graduate as sort of our our focus. And so that when we establish some of our new courses, that we're looking through that lens. Some of you have been on our regional school committee and or various school committees over the years, know we also have challenge success. Well, that hasn't gone away, is we now make sure that's ingrained in the work that we do. And so we still need to do more work with our innovative practices as it pertains to new courses, as we tweak courses, as we change. One of the the major areas, obviously, is technology and engineering. We're really kind of revamping, and Nick Grouse has done a nice job in working with Denny and working with Beth and myself and middle school cohorts to make sure that there's a continuum of curriculum instruction so that these kids have the beginning, the middle, and the end, so that when they leave, they've had a full range of experiences using innovation. We've got pockets of it, but I think it needs to be codified, and it also then needs to be sort of projected so that the public can see it, so that our students can see it, and so that our teachers understand where that connection is. That's the third one. And the fourth one came about, each of these were discussed at at school advisory council. The fourth one really came from the the work of our school advisory council this year, and that's the student sense of belonging. And we're trying to examine ways in which we can bring our various clubs together. We have about 65 clubs. Sometimes they work in isolation. And I think that we really want to try to find a way to, number one, bring those clubs together to collaborate a little bit more, where there might be some overlap, to sort of spread the work and the energy that they're trying to design. It's like if you're working on a project and you have two people, and then you get six others over there, well, let's bring them into this, and let's kind of share and figure out what we can do. It's also looking at ways, and this came from a couple of the parents who serve on on the committee, who are outstanding. And they said, if we can find ways, whether it's monthly or every other month, to have some sort of whole school-wide activity opportunity on a Friday night, on a Saturday afternoon, on some type of thing, to bring large groups of our students together, beyond a performance or beyond an athletic contest, right? But some sort of event that we could share something. We've, Rob Williamson and I have talked about the idea of having a day of service, a day of community service. And so we still have that kind of in the back of our mind as an opportunity where we can say, we've got all these clubs doing all these great things, similar to your CAGs and, you know, raising money and doing, can we find ways to link them and bring them together to kind of see where this can go? We also want that student sense of belonging, because I'm a firm believer in if students feel connected to their school, if they feel as though they belong, they feel as though they have purpose outside of their academic classes, they're more likely to, first of all, be engaged in school, perform better, and just have a much more positive experience. So that student sense of belonging goal, we're really excited about. And students who sit on my school council, which is, once again, really kind of cool at the high school level, you can do that, they're really excited for this, too. We saw some examples of it this year. You know, just to give you a sort of an example, we had this big playoff basketball game going. At the same night, we also had a trivia night. Well, we had 150 kids out of 675 kids at trivia night. We also had a whole bunch of kids at the basketball game, and that's something they want to do, which is great. But that basketball game's not for everybody. And so it was providing an opportunity where they had trivia night and prizes and and groups. And it was also a safe opportunity for students to gather, to do something constructive. Yes, Sad was the organizer of it. And so we're looking to do more of those types of things now that, hopefully, COVID is behind us, where we can kind of bring our students together and and have some fun opportunities. And some of those can be educational, too. We did see it in our seminar day this year, where we really did bring people together. We do a D S arts homecoming that Darren Buck runs, and we're looking at running that every other year and then continuing with a seminar day opportunity every two to three years. So that's our final goal, is that student sense of belonging. The other ones we see as, you know, this is more of the social-emotional growth. We see some of the other ones as the academic and curriculum. And then we also see a couple of them as really creating a strategic path for our teachers to understand where we're at and where do we want to go.
Thank you. I have, I have one question for those of us who did not go to school for education. When you were talking about the tier one interventions, does that, it sounds to me like it's a way in which in the classroom, you take into account students' different learning styles?
Absolutely, spot on. Miss Miller, spot on.
Okay, I just wanted to clear.
Yeah, it's basically, it's interventions, it's strategies. It might be, as I said, adaptations you make. So let's say, for example, you've got a a class of 20 students. Regardless if it's a CP class and honors or an AP, there are still some different learning styles in that same classroom. So it's looking at ways in which you can effectively provide the instruction, ways in which you can receive feedback from the kid, ways that you can assess. So, you know, Beth and Denny use the phrase voice and choice a lot, right? But that's really what it also comes down to, is giving students that voice and giving students choice to say, here's how I can show you that I've mastered this material. So that's what we're talking about, the the tier one interventions, where things that our classroom teachers can do prior to it becoming a 504 or an I E P or a specialized plan of any sort. It's what can we do in the general classroom with the gen ed teacher to enable a student to access the curriculum and be successful?
You also say, one-size lesson does not fit all.
Yeah.
So how do we make it a lesson with multiple layers and options?
And, you know, it's a challenge. It's hard. I mean, because if it were easy, I think schools would say, here's the manual, and, you know, everyone can can just copy it. So it does take work, it takes practice. Number one, I think, most critically, it takes knowing who your kids are, right? Knowing your kids and and how they learn. And so at the beginning of the year, things that we're talking to our teachers about is, not only can you look at past data, but also then get to know who this kid is and talk to me a little bit about what works best for you and how. And I might not be able to do it every single time, but when we can provide something different or different options, here's what I want you to do. We've seen it with some of our teachers with oral quizzing, oral testing. We've seen it with students having, you know, not only just additional time, but how they go about presenting it. Maybe they could do, you know, a multimodal type of production rather than writing that two-page paper. You know, you still want those skills, but we ultimately want students to showcase that they are learning.
That's great. Other questions?
Just want to say the framework that Denny presented on the curriculum audit, that framework for for creating lessons that have all these different access points, it seems like it will really support the work at tier one.
It will. And and the the tool that Denny created was very, very successful at the high school. And, you know, they can be a particular group because they are content knowledge people, experts. And, you know, for them to be able to have this tool and then use it in their teaching and to sort of break things down, I think, was really positive for them. You know, I think the department heads got that, but sometimes it's convincing the masses. And and they were convinced that this is a good tool. It's going to take us time.
Right.
But the tool itself can be applied across the board to everything we do.
Yeah, that's great.
You good?
Thank you.
Thanks. So this, the school improvement plan from last year was amazing, but too full. There was just too much in it. And as a, as a result, it was even hard to remember all the stuff that was in it because it was so rich. So what we tried to do was to really figure out, what can, what can we do next year that will be most impactful? And then really focus on those things. So the goals aren't that different. In some cases, we've reworded them to bring them into alignment with the district's goals. But they're fairly similar. But we got rid of things that we accomplished, first of all. So I was pleased to see that we accomplished a good deal of things. And then took off some things that we just thought, you know, that might be two or three years from now. So our four goals, the first one is essentially establishing, continuing to establish a shared vision for teaching and learning, and very much in alignment with what John was sharing. It's, we're starting with our best practices document that we we started at the beginning of this year and continuing to utilize that and update that. As our, as our knowledge grows, we need to continue to update that document. I don't think we should think of it as a static document that is codified in 2022 and never changes. From the M T S S side of things, I think for tier one instruction, I'd really like to see us focus on universal design for learning, which is really just a, it's a framework, which you can look at online. And when I first looked at it, when I first first learning about it, I thought, oh, my gosh, what is all this? It's so complicated. But really, what it's about is very much what you were, what you were speaking of, which is acknowledging from the get-go that there's, learners have all sorts of differences, that they come, that there is no one-size-fits-all, and trying to anticipate those differences that might get in the way of learning, that might be barriers to learning. And then kind of pick the highest leverage ones and say, okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna offer it in this way so that I can bypass those obstacles and make it accessible to all. And it really focuses on on three major moods. Engagement, so which is, you know, think of it as relevance and motivation, because not every, not everybody is motivated by the same thing. So you want to have different entry points for motivation and relevance. They talk about representation, which I think it was kind of the inputs for learning, that you want to make sure that whatever you're offering kids in terms of, you know, whether it's a reading assignment or whatever content, that that you want to know what might get in the way of every learner being able to access that. Let's anticipate that because there's differences. And think of that kind of ahead of time rather than after the back. And then the third is what I call action and expression, which is kind of the outputs of learning, that there doesn't have to always just be one way, you know, the the five-paragraph essay or whatever, that you want to look at that and say, what, what's going to get in the way? What are the obstacles to learning? And ultimately, the goal is to create expert learners. So I'm really excited about that. We're really lucky that Tracy Sakolowski, our assistant principal, is very well-trained in that and is a trainer of that herself. So I think she can be a great support. And then there's an organization cast that does terrific training as well. And then for tier two interventions, which is kind of that next level of support that's necessary for some kids, I think that we need to continue to focus on that. To do that really well, we need to make some changes to our schedule as well. And that's kind of where we got stuck this year because by the time we really started to talk about what, for example, a wind block could really look like, there were so many questions that necessarily came up. Questions about working conditions, if I do that, and I still teach five classes, you know, is that fair? And questions about the best ways to implement that? Are there curricula that exist for math interventions and for reading interventions? And there were just lots of open questions. So I would like for us to establish a working group to study that and to make recommendations both to the schedule as well as to curriculum and 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 structure. Also, visit the elementary schools, who are way ahead of us. And that's true in every district that I've been in. The elementary schools are always way ahead for for lots of reasons, but mostly, it's a structural thing. It's just a much more conducive environment to doing tier two interventions than a secondary environment. And then lastly, what what did not get done, but was on the school improvement plan for this year, was a library update. And now we have our our permanent librarian, who is absolutely terrific. And we're gonna need to do some work on this library. That was flooded earlier this year. And so I think it's a great opportunity to to get that done next year. School improvement goal two is nurturing a positive school culture and a sense of belonging. I would, I would really like to see the school establish a steering committee to plan for a successful introduction of a middle school advisory program for the following school year. I think an advisory program is a really core element of a well-run middle school and can do wonders for a feeling of belonging and connection, both to your peers, but also to at least one school adult who really gets to know you. And also then gives us another entry point for social-emotional learning and just communication in general, how to talk about challenging topics as they come up through the year. It's, it's an environment that is designed for talking and for conversation and learning how to speak with each other and communicate with each other. Having been in a lot of middle schools myself, the only thing worse than not having an advisory program is having a poorly-designed advisory program. And so I do think it's a good idea for them to take their time and go slow and study it, visit other schools where it's where it's working well. There's lots of curricula out there. We want to make sure that that our teachers don't have to recreate the wheel, that they have something that they can jump on and and use. Like Beth and John were talking about, we have to continue to make adjustments to our our discipline system, both because of state law and also just because of our evolving sense of what works for kids. sense of what works for kids. And so we're going to continue working on that. And that's goal two. Goal three is specifically related to the middle school schedule. I think that's the other big rock that they need to work on next year. We've made a lot of progress to it, towards it. I think we focused the lens now on the major questions that we need to answer, which we didn't really know going into this. So I think that they have a nice head start to that. And I'm hopeful that they'll be able to get it done for the following year. Just FYI for this coming school year, we do have a couple of possible changes that are still being finalized right now, small ones, like going from three lunches probably down to two lunches and possibly adding in some additional break time for kids. And so I want to leave that to Tracy and Ann to finalize because they're the ones who are going to have to live it. And our fourth goal is ensuring that our buildings and grounds support strong instructional and curricular, extracurricular programming. Two things on there, we're a funny school in that we are really tight for space, and then we also have these enormous spaces that are just wonderful. And so I know where the district is doing a space audit, which I really welcome, to try to figure out creatively, how can we use both the indoor space and the outdoor space? There's some hunger for some outdoor classroom space that we can take kids out and do some learning outside as well. And then there's also a real appetite for some play structures, you know, something that's middle school appropriate, that kids can climb and just kind of socialize and enjoy during, during lunch and during any other time that we can take the kids outside. This year, we were able to get the kids outside for at least 10 minutes during most lunch periods for a recess period. We got a big soccer bag full of, soccer ball bag full of, you know, soccer balls, footballs, jump ropes, frisbees, I'm probably forgetting some things. And that's been a huge success. The kids are awesome outside. They clearly love it and need it. And so we're just exploring, like, could we, since we're doing two lunches, can we lengthen lunch a little bit? Should we add the break to lunch? Should we have a break via separate time in the afternoon? And they'll figure all that out, and I'm excited for that. So that's it.
Thank you. Questions?
Comment? I think you're all wise to, I know you wanted to do the schedule, but to kind of take a breather and make sure that you do it well. And I, I'm so happy to hear that you're thinking about an advisory period and a little more of a break and more outside time because I just think both of those things, especially the outside, running around and maybe feeling more connected with advisory, it's going to be ripple effect, I think, in the classroom, focus, behavior, all of that. So I'm glad, I know my kids are not here anymore, but they would have loved more of that.
Well said. I wanted to just also, from the perspective of the school council role, echo that, you know, taking the school improvement plan and, you know, winnowing it down to less goals than maybe were there last year, some of which were, you could achieve because they were accomplished. I think it's hard to do, and especially in a council atmosphere where, you know, like nobody wants to give up anything that you think about towards improvement. But I think that David did a good job in sort of guiding the group and leading the group to really think about what are those big rocks and the highest leverage things that if, if the school focuses on those in the year to come, that we will see some really strong outcomes. So I appreciate the kind of much clearer focus on the big things that need to be attended to, and it's a much cleaner and feels ambitious, but, but definitely doable plan.
Can I also just add that if any school advisory council folks are watching, I just want to give a shout out to them. I have to say that, you know, this being my first year as a principal, my first year running a, a school advisory council, and I was really nervous going into it, and I could not have lucked out with a greater group. They were just so supportive, so hardworking, had so many great ideas. It was a highlight of my month, every month, it truly was. So thank you. Thank you.
No, no problem. You had a great partner in Meg Hyde, who helped you chair, chair the committee and really helped, was very helpful.
Amazing.
So out in the community ether, wherever you are, thank you, Meg.
Yes, thank you, Meg.
Okay, great.
Can I just close out by saying that hopefully you heard a lot of themes between what Denny and I presented and what the high school and the middle school presented tonight. I think it's a reminder to all of us, we had a great leadership team discussion about this, is just like our educators say when they're creating their goals, some goals take more than one year. So that's why you're seeing kind of the iteration or the hangover effect of we want to do things well. And lastly, what Maggie pointed out is that when you take on too much, you don't do anything well. So really, what are the main things that we want to tackle so we can do them well and maintain our sanity over a long period of time? So, thank you both.
Okay. So we're winding down the consent agenda. Is there anything on there that anyone has any, like edits to? No?
Can I just mention that I forgot to, I failed to mention that John couldn't be here tonight because he's traveling, but he appreciates you considering, considering him being renewed for another year or appointed for another year.
Right. Great, excellent.
He's earned his, he's earned his keep just with the interest.
And I guess I can, I should say this now, which is under the communications piece, are, are the subcommittee assignments, which, you know, they're what all the assignments are, what all the possibilities are, and who held them this past year. And some of them, like negotiations, will go away. Would you look and see what you would like to work on and, you know, what you don't want to work on anymore? And even if other people are doing something that you really have an interest in doing, feel free to say, gee, I'd love to do that if that person doesn't want to do it anymore because that's, that's possible. Please let either Mark know or me know what your choices are, and then we'll get together and kind of see where it's clean and then see where there might be, and then we'll get back to people and talk so we can get this all set up. Okay?
Can I make a comment on subcommittees?
Yes.
And who knows, this may be my job now, but I always think it could be helpful to see, like, we have our school committee signups for these subcommittees, but who within the district would be a nice point person to have a conversation with periodically and just have their names in case names change and just kind of updated lists each year?
Like the contact person for, say, the technology.
Yes, exactly. Yes.
I see what you're saying.
Yes.
I think that makes sense.
Yeah, they can do that.
All right, good.
Yep.
I look to you good.
Anything's possible, right?
I'm going to delegate.
All right, that's a great idea.
I think we were looking to, there's, there's things listed there that are from the past that really don't have anymore.
We kind of went, you kind of went through the, oh, and there's an inscription that isn't on there, which is the calendar.
Task force.
Yes.
So yes, we're working on cleaning it up a little bit.
Yeah.
So we'll get you a, a new version with contact names that you can then start to plug into.
Okay, perfect.
But you have all summer to figure this out. So we'll get that to you sooner rather than later.
So can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Maggie Sharon? Second? Kate Potter? Excellent. All in favor? The motion passes unanimously. Do I need to have a motion to adjourn? May I have a motion to adjourn?
Mark Keely?
So, yeah.
It's seven.
Thank you. Who would like to second?
Colleen Burt.
Great. All in favor of adjourned?
Are you sure?
Yeah, we're fast. Eight thirty-three PM.